... City Council to order. I need to inform you this is a public meeting and it is an open meeting. If you will note posted in the northwest corner of this room is actual Opens Meeting Act, made accessible to members of the public. If you'll please rise with us for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the Pledge of Allegiance to do the white of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Van Dyke?
Here.
Reader?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Brandeman?
Here.
Fauss?
Here.
Saunders? All right, and under action tonight, first, action required is approval of the consent agenda before you include it in your packet.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
The motion has been made with approval of the consent agenda. If you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And the full agenda that as well was included in that packet, I would ask for a motion for approval.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Moved in seconded, approval of the full agenda, if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Next on the, for action tonight is a special presentation, a town hall meeting to receive comments on the Northeast Nebraska Solid Waste Coalition budget and the rates for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2010. I would look for Randy to conduct this.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a requirement of the interlocal agreement, creating the Solid Waste Coalition. There's a town hall meeting held in each of the three largest communities every year, and that's Columbus, Fremont, and Norfolk. There's no action required on this item, it's merely to take input regarding the Coalition's budget. The budget you have in your agenda packets is prepared based on keeping the tipping fee at $24 per ton. You'll know these tonnage goes down slightly. A large part of this is due to a decrease in contaminated soils from what we had the year before. There was also decreases in tonnage at Fremont and Norfolk. Columbus had an increase. And we budget the actual tonnage received in the prior year plus 2 percent. So if tonnage does go up, we don't have to amend the budget for increased operating costs because of that. Interest income goes down. It was $18,000 budgeted last year and only $8,100 during the current year, primarily due to decreased interest rates, but we're also expecting to, at least in the budget, spend fund balance down because of some capital improvements I'll talk about a little bit later. Total Coalition expenditures increased from about $4.4 million last year to, from $1.9 million last year to about $6.4 million this year. It's an increase of $4.4 million. Two items primarily make up that increase. We're recommending that the Coalition refund its debt. There's $3,150,000 of outstanding debt, so in the budget on a cash basis, that shows as a expenditure, and that's a big driver of the increased expenditures. Also, we've got in there capital. We're budgeting capital improvements at $1,373,375. Burns &amp; McDonald is prepared to report reviewing the Coalition's need for a gas collection system. We don't currently meet the requirements to have a gas collection system, but they believe we will at some point in the future have to install a gas collection system. If we install that system ahead of time before we're required to install it, we can sell carbon credits, and they think we'll be able to sell the carbon credits for enough to offset part of the cost of the gas system. They're going to be reporting to the Coalition Board at the next meeting on that, and if the Board decides to go forward, we'll have this money in the budget to pay for the gas collection system. Another increase in the budget is enclosure post closure funding. That's budgeted in the interfund operating transfer outline item. That increases from $46,000 last year to $265,000 this year. That's an increase of $219,000. And that's because as they were preparing the permit renewal, they updated the closure post closure care cost, and they increased from $11.5 million to $16.7 million, which is a $5.2 million increase. That's driven primarily by two items. Cost of the geomembrane and geotextile materials nearly doubled since the last cost estimate was prepared, and those are driven largely by energy cost. And then also, they put in the operating budget for during the close, post closure period, the cost of the landfill gas management system I talked about earlier. So those two costs together increase their total cost estimate by that $5.2 million. And included in your agenda packets, in addition to the general fund budget I just discussed, is the closure post closure care fund budget, and as I mentioned, we're increasing that transfer up to $265,000 from $46,000 last year. Total funds available for the closure post closure care increase from $3.6 million, about $3.7 million budgeted last year, to about $4.1 million in the current year. About half of that increase is due to interest earnings and half due to the current year funding. I'd answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Randy, on the, one of the deals, you noted was the geotextile products were going up drastically in price and stuff like that, and that's all on the post closure or on the closure end of it?
Definitely on the closure end of it, correct.
If they're increasing that drastically, are we ahead to buy it and store it?
We're not projecting closing the landfill and needing to cap that landfill until I believe it's over 30 years out, so.
So the product may even change by that time, then?
Yeah.
As I say, if it keeps on increasing incrementally that way, you know, that might be a thought, then. You know, because again, the geotextile products are all based on oil products.
I don't, yeah, that's something I hadn't even thought about. I don't think any of us have thought about, but.
There's a lot of stuff to store.
Well, every five years, they get a crack at us, and we always have to change something in the, in the permit and do something a little bit different, so I would suspect that trying to buy geotextile material for something planned out 30 years in advance is, they'd look at it and says.
Because they don't do, I take it they don't do closure on cells and with this product?
No, we, we have it set up so that we get to close the entire landfill at one time, put that final cap and closure on there. We will put, we'll put some intermediate soil coverings on top of the, the cells as we get them up to final elevation. But one of the last things you do is you come in and kind of add a little trash to the top of all those cells to get it to the kind of a, a uniform elevation, so that when you put those geomembrane caps on there, that you don't have undulations that you'll get based on some settlement over 30 years. We want to start with a, we want to start with it without any ponds up there.
So what happens if a miracle would develop and we didn't need $17 million to close this thing, we only needed eight? What, what happens to the money, then?
We have to take care of this thing for 30 years after we close it, so we're looking at something 60 years down the road, and I believe we will have money left over because the state, when they make you do these funding calculations, they don't allow you to assume any real rate of return on the money during that 30-year post closure period. I would be really surprised if we didn't have a real rate of return, and we've been assuming a real rate of return of 3 percent in our calculations. So I believe there will be money left over, that money will belong to the Coalition, and by that time, we'll probably site our third landfill, and we can use it for, for that or.
Good discussion. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience, as this is a town hall meeting? Okay, seeing none. Randy, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is proclamation, and there's a couple of them that have been provided. Let me take first of all, the proclamation for Teammates Mentoring Month. Whereas the mission of Teammates is to positively impact the world by inspiring youth to reach their full potential, and whereas Teammates mentoring program is a one-hour-a-week school-based mentoring program, whereas any adult 18 and over with an interest in supporting a young person can become a Teammates mentor for youth grades three through 12, and meet with a mentee anytime during the school day, and whereas youth who are mentored receive support and guidance from a caring adult and show measurable improvement in academic achievement, attendance, and discipline referrals, and whereas youth who are mentored are more likely to stay in school and graduate and show improvement in interpersonal relationships. Now therefore, I, Sue Fuchman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2010 as Teammates Mentoring Month, and I urge all citizens and the business community of Norfolk to support Teammates. Signed this January 19th, 2010. Is there anyone here to accept this? Okay. The other one here is a proclamation sent to us by our Governor Dave Heinemann, and this is from the State of Nebraska, proclamation whereas on December 10th, 2009, the Norfolk Fire Division, along with the assistance from Battle Creek, Hater, and Stanton Fire Departments responded to a fire involving a propane tank behind the former Prodiant plant in Norfolk, Nebraska. And whereas because of the threat of an explosion from a propane tank located near the fire, the City of Norfolk Police Division evacuated approximately 8,000 citizens in the City of Norfolk. And whereas with their combined suppression efforts, the fire was extinguished and no injuries were sustained. And whereas it is important that the citizens of Nebraska recognize the dedication and the bravery of men and women who helped to ensure the safety of the citizens of the City of Norfolk. Now therefore, I, Dave Heinemann, Governor of the State of Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the week of January 24th through the 30th, 2010, as Emergency Response Team Appreciation Week in Nebraska, and I do hereby urge all citizens to take due note of the observance. Signed with the seal of the State of Nebraska to be affixed this 13th day of January in the year of our Lord 2010. Signed by the Governor. And with that, I would like to also read to you a letter that was sent to me from PGP International, which is current, it currently is the owner of the Prodiant facility, and their parent company being ABF London, England. Dear Mayor Fuchman, on behalf of PGP International, I would like to take opportunity to thank the many city officials of Norfolk for their swift and highly professional response to the emergency incident which occurred at our Norfolk facility last week formerly owned by Prodiant Incorporated. In particular, the Norfolk Fire Department under the leadership of Norfolk Fire Chief Shane Wiener is to be commended for the heroic efforts of the department's brave emergency response personnel who contained and extinguished the fire. We also would like to commend the Norfolk Police Department who managed the orderly evacuation of the city residents during the early stages of this incident. The many different city officials and personnel who came together during this incident are to be commended for their actions. We are very, very thankful for the swift response. We would also commend the heroic effort of firefighter Scott and the 15 others that directed water on the tank as Scott turned the three shut-off valves. We appreciate all of the extraordinary efforts exhibited during this event and certainly want to extend our sincere thanks. Sincerely, Zachary S. Woodshock, Chief Executive Officer of PGP International. Shane, I will give this to you as well as the proclamation by the Governor, and let you extend to certainly your group, and Chief, you hide back there, but you too are to be commended with sincere thanks from all of us.
Thank you, Mayor.
So that is for you.
Thank you.
It's buried in here somewhere. Moving on, then, on the public hearings, we have a public hearing tonight for the mayor and council to sit as a board of equalization to levy a special assessment in the amount of $132.18 for mowing weed control and incidental weed removal at 1105 Blaine. I would ask for a motion to adjourn as mayor and council and reconvene as the board of equalization.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Moved in seconded. I need you to please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative? Okay. Please. This public hearing is for the mayor and city council to levy, consider levying a special assessment in the amount of $132.18 for mowing weed control and incidental weed removal at 1105 Blaine. The Health Division notified the property owner to take care of the problem, and they did not do that. Therefore, the city performed the removal and the mowing. The city billed the property owner and mailed notice to the property owner, and this is the way that the city can try to recoup the cost of doing the maintenance by levying a special assessment and then filing a lien against the property.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing done. Then I can close this hearing, and again, ask for a motion to adjourn as the board of equalization and to reconvene once again as mayor and council, if you will please vote.
So moved, I would make that motion, Your Honor. Second.
Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
All right, and we will ask for consideration, then, of the Resolution 2010-2, levying the special assessment as provided with the information.
Your Honor, I'd introduce Resolution 2010-2. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion at all? Motion, then, to approve Resolution Number 2010-2, if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 2010-2 is adopted.
Okay. And next, we'll look for a presentation from Norfolk Fire Division, Chief Wiener, on the 2008, 2009 annual report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council, this year for our 2008, 2009 annual report, obviously, it's a little bit different. We're going on a fiscal year instead of the, of the calendar year, and the reason for that is because we want to blend it in with our budget document, and when we collect our data and crunch all the numbers, it's easier to blend it in with the budget document. So we made a change at the Fire Division this year, and we're looking at the fiscal year, so unless directed otherwise, you'll see a fiscal year report instead of a calendar year. So there's, some of this information would be included in from October 1st of '09, which you would have received in, obviously, in, in the calendar, the last calendar year, so, excuse me, '08, you would have received in the last calendar year. So with that being said, I just wanted to kind of briefly bring you up to speed of what we've been doing at the Fire Division, and looking at the Operations Bureau first, which is, is just that operations side of our division, the firefighting, EMS response, hazardous materials response. You'll see that in the report that we've been busy with training as usual. We have almost 6,000 hours of training in total, averaging around 210 hours per firefighter. A number of our firefighters attended a 16-hour fire safety officer course, and we've also certified some divers in ice rescue, which is some specialized training. I'll just kind of highlight some of the specialized training. Two of our members had a 16-hour fire investigation course that they attended also at the Fire Academy. So we've been busy with training, and that's a large portion of what we do to, to be at the ready for, for our emergency response scenarios that may present themselves in the course of a year. Along with that, you see there's a related story, and this is enclosure 20 there on your, on your screen. We had a, we did have another propane incident where we responded up to Lindy, Nebraska, to help with overturned propane truck, which was caught on fire also, and that was part of our regional hazardous materials team response, and that occurred on March 4th of last year. So that was significant and got a lot of exposure in the state, and it was another significant response for our team and, and for all the emergency responders in Northeast Nebraska, including the state emergency response team. So it was, it gave us some, some training, valuable training, and some valuable exposure with some of our public safety partners. And that story is in there. You can see our format in our, in our annual report is a little bit different. I hope you like it. Faith Peterson put it together for us, and she likes to blend that into the, to what's on our website, so it's readily available on our website, and I think it flows nice and has a lot of pictures there, too, which is always nice, so, but it is a little bit different from what you've seen in the past. Our Norfolk reserves program continues to be a strong and very functioning program. We had 27 members in '09, '08, '09, and as you know, our reserves are staffed with members from the community that train with our paid firefighters, and they're frankly invaluable to our response, and we'd be lost without them. They make, make our ability to fight, structure fires, and go to propane emergencies and, and all the emergencies that we deal with, hazardous materials calls, they make it possible because they are a large part of our manpower. And by having those reserve staffs, we really get a, a big bang for our buck because they're a good supplement to our paid staff, and they're well-trained and, and very, and congeal with the paid staff quite well. We went to, that Back to the Basics Training Program I told you about, about last year, is up and functioning and working quite well, and I just wanted to highlight that again this year because Back to the Basics is the kind of things that we do every day, and sometimes, as firefighters, we tend, we can get caught up in more advanced training because we want to do the, for lack of better words, the high-speed training, and if we aren't wise about that, we'll lose sight of really what, what makes us valuable, and that's the basic firefighting and the basic emergency medicine that we provide to the community. So we need to keep our skills extremely sharp in the basics, and that's what that program's all about. And not only that, it brings the reserves and the paid department together, and it really helps them to congeal and, and, and make that an effective team. So I'm proud of that program. Jim Dooley heads that program up and does a fantastic job with that. It's my first time with the computer, so it's not quite as, I'm not used to it there. It's a pretty nice little deal, but it takes me a little time to scroll down here. Our planning commission's been active this year. That's an operation that's managed by Scott Cordis and is Secretary of Position of Faith Peterson. They proved, had 18 public hearings and approved six zoning district changes and amended two conditional use permits and two amendments to the comprehensive plan, and also approved eight final plats that comprised of 50 lots, which was an increase from last year. So they, they're continuing to be busy, which is, which is a good thing, because if the planning commission's busy, that usually means that the community is not stagnant and is continuing to grow. So that's a wonderful, wonderful report to see. Our emergency management agency is that Regional Level Emergency Management headed by Faith Peterson is that three county plus the City of Norfolk, interlocal agency that, that manages for that whole entire area. We did a full-scale exercise in September that focused on, on chlorine leaking in downtown, and we worked with the 72nd Civil Support Team during that, during that drill. That drill really helped, paid big dividends for us when it came to the propane incident, and you guys all were aware of that drill and actually participated in that, and we stood up the ELC and briefed elected officials during that drill, and it all became very pertinent when we had our propane incident. So those kind of drills, though they sometimes can be, seem like an overexaggeration or things we need to continue, and we, we have that intention to do so. More on the Operations Bureau there. We responded to 1,714 rescue calls last, in the last fiscal year, which, which is the bulk of our calls. Keeps, keeps us busy. The emergency medicine seems to be oftentimes a gateway to healthcare for a lot of our citizens. They call the ambulance for a wide variety of things, from traumas to major medicals to, to minor medicals, so, and to slips and falls, and you can name it, we get called to it. So that continues to grow. That is up slightly from last year by a, by a few calls over the, for the emergency We had three firefighters this year compete in the World Firefighter Combat Challenge. Chad Wordman, Lance Conroy, and Ryan Goodman are their names, and I wanted to highlight that for you, and the story's there in the report, that these three gentlemen worked their tail off. For the last two years, they've been training for this challenge. They made the World Combat Challenge this year, and went down to Las Vegas and have competed and done quite well. They're competing against five-member teams, and these guys are leaders as far as our physical fitness program. They're down there every single day, working out and doing, doing a wide variety of workouts and really setting the standard for the rest of us to follow as far as firefighters, and I'm very proud of them. They do a fantastic job. They're all in excellent shape, and, and for a three-man team, they, they compete with the five-member teams quite well. And so they are continuing to do that, and they're leading the way in our, in our fitness at the station there.
Can I assume, Chief, you're working to join them next time?
No, they keep hitting, they keep hitting me up, Mayor. My body's a little older than their bodies, but that's something I should probably do. They do have a chief's, a chief's entry that you can partake in. That's something I should maybe consider, so.
Well, we'll look forward to hearing that.
Although I try to keep up with them, and it's, it's tough, it's a tough leaden. So this year, we also participated with the PDE and with the State Patrol in the GREAT Program, which is a gang resistance education program for the middle school kids, and we get, this is a longstanding program that the law enforcement community and public safety in general participates in, and really, really get a great turnout of middle school kids, and they have a blast out at the Training Tower, doing everything from rappelling to, to water fights, to driving golf carts around and learning the rules of the road. So it's a wonderful program, and we've been participating in that for a number of years, and it's, and it's going well. Moving on to the Prevention Bureau. We had a total of 382 building permits issued compared to 392 in '07, '08. The majority of the permits were for alterations, additions to one and two-family dwellings. Single-family dwelling permits increased from 38 to 46, which is another positive sign in our community. We had a large, over the course of the last few years, we've had several large commercial projects come to our community and develop, and the overall thumb is when there's commercial, usually the residential will follow, and that seems to be the case so far, at least in the early, the early looking at that. So we hope that continues. Fire Marshal Office completed 944 fire inspections and 39 fire investigations, and conducted 56 school programs, encountering 2,536 students. So we're getting out there and meeting the kids and, and teaching about fire prevention as well, and, and that always pays, it's hard to measure, but it always seems to, seems to pay dividends just by looking at our fire loss and fire response. Valuation of the building permits issued in '08, '09 was $36 million, just over $36.5 million, compared to $101 million, which was a record high the preceding year, but that was kind of an outlier. And we're more down, in '08 and '09, we're more, we're down more to the normal levels. For example, '06, '07 was $36 million as well. In '07 and '08, we had two major projects, being Faith Regional and Northeast College Project, which really increased our building permission, evaluations, so. We like to see those big numbers, but they're hard to sustain, but still, $36 million is Fire loss last year was down slightly. We had $580,000 for the year, for that fiscal year. Told there. Rescue calls by week, you can see that graph there, averaging that 200 to 300 per day, not per day, but to day of the week. That's over the year, I'm sorry. And then we can get down to our, our numbers there, then we're looking at performance We had 204 total responses in that reporting time in that year. 1,714 emergency medical calls, and we encountered 1,934. nine hundred and thirty-four patients, five hundred and thirteen were trauma patients, one thousand four hundred and twenty-one medical patients, and then two hundred and ninety fire calls. Out of those fire calls, we had twenty-four structured fires, and our performance measures are a little more in-depth than they have been in the past, under the recommendation of our city administrator, we're trying to tighten those performance measures up and give more information out there to, to prove what, what each division's doing out there, so this is our first crack at it, but you can see that fifty-four percent of the fires were contained to rumor origin, which is, is outstanding, forty-six percent were contained to the structure of origin, which is, which is good too, obviously we don't want to have any conflagrations and get them out of the structure of origin. We had thirty-four Level One callbacks, which means that's a number of times we called all staff back, reserves and paid staff off duty over the course of that fiscal year, and we had thirty-eight Level Two callbacks, which is when we just call, call a number, certain number of people, two, three, six people depending on the emergency at hand. Some of our effectiveness there, as you scroll down, you can see those numbers, just to highlight some of the major points there, eighty-three and a half percent of our patients received that needed an IV, we were able to establish eighty-three and a half percent of those on patients that needed IVs, so out of the hundred percent, obviously that's a fairly solid number, and Dr. Sherber's pleased with that. Under, under the number of patients that needed an intracial tube, which is an airway tube for them, in order for them to breathe, we were able to establish eighty-nine percent with zero of them being misplaced, and that's always the goal, we don't want ever put one of those tubes in the wrong place, which is in the gut, so we look towards those numbers as paramedics to be remarkable. Now, at eighty-nine percent, if, that doesn't mean the other eleven percent weren't taken care of, that just means we were unable to put in an airway, and we just managed that with the basic life support airway, so the care was still effective. Average response time per call is four minutes and forty-eight seconds, number of incidents, first arriving units within five minutes was one thousand three hundred and ninety-three, eighty-five percent of the total, but that's a little bit misleading because that is the total within the city. If I put in the rural calls, that number would drop to seventy percent, but obviously if, when we're longer response time out into the rural, we, we do take care of a hundred and ten square miles of rural area for that fire and EMS response, so when you blend in that, we dropped to seventy percent, but I don't think it's fair for us to count those rural calls because of the travel distance, so. With that being said, I would sure be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The only thing that I noted, Shane, was it seems to me like your number of false alarms certainly is high, I mean, it's about equal to.
Good point, Mayor, and in fact, I think I, I highlighted that, and you can see that, and that's, that's significant, and the reason that's significant is because it's almost as high as our number of our fire calls that we go.
Right.
So what's significant about that is when we respond out, whether it's, we don't know if it's a false alarm.
Right, I understand.
But we're running out there with the same resources, we're putting public safety at our own firefighter's response, the police officer's response, and, and the, and the general citizenry out there in harm's way because we're running lights and sirens, and people are reacting to those lights and sirens and moving through traffic and doing things that they normally, sometimes normally would not do as the traffic flows and stops and changes because there's emergency response vehicles coming, and so those, those responses are, are dangerous for everyone involved, and then when it turns out to be a false alarm, it always frustrates you because we put all those resources in harm's way and the citizens in harm's way for, for nothing. Trying to get a handle on false alarms is tough because it can be malfunctions of alarm systems, most of them are, are burnt toast, and, and in certain residential facilities, a lot of times those kind of things will come in where, where the alarm system will go off and we'll get an automatic dispatch there, and, and we'll have to make the appropriate decisions and send appropriate resources, but it'll be something simpler, simple like that, so to try to get a handle on that's tough. We do have an ordinance in place that talks about if a certain facility has a certain number of false alarms, then they get charged for that response, and it can be significant, it can be six, seven, eight hundred dollars depending on the number of calls that they have, false alarms that they have, but we're trying, we, at that point, we're trying to recoup some of those costs because we call people in and make Level One callbacks, and we're bringing people in on overtime for, for a certain number of those false alarms, so it is, it just kind of pokes you right in the eye when you see those false alarms right up there with the number of fires we have, but I can tell you that's probably pretty common for most fire departments.
Is that right?
Yes.
Shane, is that more of a commercial application, or is this just like a residential for an individual overreacting?
Most of them are commercial, I would say, you know, most residential facilities, and I'm not, I would just, for instance, for instance, the regional center, hospitals, nursing homes, those type of institutions that have a lot of false alarms because of, because of a variety of reasons, so.
Any other comments or questions? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I see nothing else on the agenda unless anyone else has. If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.